Until our next meeting, that takes us first to our sign permit agenda and there's one tonight for sign dash one two two six five dash two thousand and sixteen, Duck Doughnuts signage, five eleven Quince Orchard Road in the C two general commercial zone. This is for an icon sign approval. Presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Good evening.
Good evening. This application is for Duck's Doughnut signage located at five eleven Quince Orchard Road, which is also part of the First Field Shopping Center. This application comes before the planning commission because the sign contains an image of a duck holding a doughnut, which is considered an icon sign in accordance to section twenty-four dash two twelve J, which is required for a planning commission approval. So the applicant is proposing to installed a forty-one square foot individually channeled letter sign in the front entrance of the business. Currently, there is no sign package for the shopping center, but the sign is just consistent within the other tenants in the store. So here's kind of just a rendering of what it will look like. Lastly, the sign was reviewed by the property owner and received approval.
Jasmine, do you prefer, this is everything we're looking at, would you use it on the icon itself? The first person that says buy a duck, you're going down.
It's too pixelated.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yeah, you can't even tell what they had and what's the beak.
All right, any questions for Jasmine?
No.
Is there anyone here who is going to comment on this application? All right, seeing nobody, any concerns? I guess actually, if you want to do the recommendation formally.
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based in the exhibit submitted and the staff report findings and recommendations, grant sign dash one two two six five dash two thousand and sixteen Duck's Doughnut signage, finding it in compliance with section twenty-four dash two twelve of the city code.
Any concerns?
I'll just comment that I think it's imbalanced with the rest of the sign. The color scheme, scale, and actual dimension is the same as the lettering of the sign, so it seems like a very appropriate use of an icon.
And we don't have a duck there already, so there's some diversity.
There'll be no mistaking of the other duck uses up and down the street, so.
That's true. All right, any other concerns, questions, comments? All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant sign one two two six five dash two thousand and sixteen, based on exhibit submitted and the staff report finding, findings and recommendations, and finding it to be in compliance with section twenty-four dash two twelve of the city code.
Second. Move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Let me, for the record, do this officially and let you know that Phil Wessel is joining us on the dais this evening, as not all regular commissioners are present, and will be participating fully in all of the agenda items. That takes us to a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. Caroline, I'm going to ask you, I'll read into the record, it's for BOA seven four one five dash two thousand and sixteen. Pronounce for me, or how is the JBAN supposed to be said?
I think it's JBAN.
JBAN, okay. JBAN, education outreach program at Eight Brooks Avenue in the RB residential buffer zone, and this is for a special exception of philanthropic institution, and we are reviewing this in preparation for a recommendation to Board of Appeals. Caroline, sign, as presenting from staff. Good evening.
Good evening. As you said, this is a recommendation to the Board of Appeals for a philanthropic institution at Eight Brooks Avenue, which is here, highlighted in blue on the aerial. It's one lot in off of North Frederick Avenue on Brooks Avenue, and this is a office space, seven hundred square feet of which would be used for this philanthropic institution. And Ms. Comfort Johnson, who runs the education outreach program, is here, and I will leave it to her to explain what they're doing.
JBAN stands for John, Basio, Abraham, and Norriso. I'm a single mom, low-income single mom, been educating my children, and they're all at graduate and doctoral level. And I want to give back to the community. So I started my nonprofit organization, and I live in Gathersburg for ten years. So going through the school system, going to Housing Opportunity Commission, seeing that our children need all the help we can get, and I decided to give back, and my children decided to join me for us to give back and help these children. So I'm back in Gathersburg, looking for space.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you to start the program. We did a part of program with, it's in here with HOC at the Emory Group Center, and I'm telling you, it's just wonderful, this terrain on the rules, and I just don't want to turn my back. So I'm here asking for permission to continue the program.
Very nice. Caroline, a technical question. Why is this considered philanthropic in that educational or some related use?
So what we, in order for it to be considered on that property, which is, I should have mentioned earlier, is a residential buffer zone, and so there are only certain types of uses that are permitted in the zone, one of which is a philanthropic institution, whereas a other type of for-profit tutoring center might not fit into that zone. But because this is a nonprofit, we felt like it could, it fell in that category and met the need, met those criteria for that zone.
And to be clear, it's only one space within that larger converted, I guess it's a converted house, it's been an office for.
Yeah, it's, there's the floor plan, so it's seven hundred square feet on the first floor of the building.
Okay. All right, that's all. I had any questions?
The ratio of parking spaces, notice it says talking about high school equivalencies, and therefore there's a net of one extra space allowed. Because it is philanthropic, is that a difference between now it's not an educational institution, it's a philanthropic? Do those ratios change at all?
We didn't have a specific ratio in our zoning ordinance for the use, so we felt we, we applied the high school ratio because we thought it fit best with the type of, the type of service that they were providing.
Is that something we should consider in the future as far as, I mean, do we have many philanthropic organizations that work?
No, I think the way we've dealt with it all in the past is applied whatever the, and then there are all kinds of philanthropic institutions, so some might be more like an office, and some might be more like this, so we can use the parking ordinance to, you know, to apply it to however the use is.
I'm fine with that.
And most of our students would be on the buses.
I was going to say, I'm not going to drive anymore.
Okay.
With, with the nineteen parking spaces being allocated to this use and with this organization not taking the full building, I'm assuming the other office suites.
It's only, it's five parking spaces for this particular use. It's nineteen required for the entire building. So they're, they actually, the whole building has actually one extra parking space.
Makes sense. All right, any other questions? Is there anyone here that is, wants to comment on this application? All right, seeing nobody. Caroline, what should we recommend, what do you recommend we recommend?
Staff recommends that the planning commission, based on the exhibit submitted and the staff report findings and recommendation, recommend approval of special exception BOA seven four one five two thousand and sixteen to the Board of Appeals. There are three conditions listed in a draft resolution of approval that is in your package. I think it is.
It's not there.
Exhibit number fourteen, and they're also listed in the staff comments.
Can I ask a question about one of the conditions? Condition number one about terminating a special exception. And my question is that, as this reads, it terminates at the time of the expiration of their lease or any lease renewals. So if this program continues to operate for fifteen years and they renew their lease three times, they have to come back each time?
They don't need to come back. That's, that's written in a way so that they, it's granted for as long as they stay there. But it's not, in other words, another philanthropic use that came in at some other point would not be covered.
And that's my, that's how I would assume it would be, that's how I assume the intent is, but that's not how this reads.
You want to repeat the word terminate?
Yes, it shall terminate at the time of the expiration of their lease.
What does the lawyer think?
Or any subsequent, or any subsequent lease renewals.
Terminations.
Reads that it terminates as soon as they renew their lease.
I think what you're, it seems that, an easy way to, clarify what we're trying to say is, at the time of the expiration of the lease or the expiration of any subsequent lease renewal.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's fine.
Makes sense?
We will make the change.
Absolutely.
Good. All right, any other comments or questions, concerns?
Just add, just a brief comment, that I think there is good reason to not sort of have a blanket approval for all philanthropic organizations. It's just that it sort of glares out in the code that this is such a wildly appropriate use, you know, and such a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, that, you know, sorry to put you through this, but, you know, we're protecting against other uses, not yours. This is a great, I think, phenomenal use for this buffer zone for residential.
Great point. Thanks. All right, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, based on the, let's see, findings, exhibit submitted and the staff report, move that we recommend approval of special exception BOA seven four one five dash two thousand and sixteen to the Board of Appeals, with the three conditions as written to the record.
And amended.
And amended.
Second. Move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I know you'll do well. Welcome back to Gathersburg.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to our site plan agenda. There's one tonight for AFP dash seven four two zero dash two thousand and sixteen, Gathersburg Station apartment sign package at three seventy East Diamond Avenue in the CBD Central Business District. This is an amendment to final site plan and, final site plan, excuse me, sign plan, amendment to final sign plan or site plan? Site, sign plan, I guess.
Sign package.
Anyway, presenting from staff is Jasmine Forbes. Again, Jasmine, hi.
Good evening. Before I start, I just got word that the applicant who's supposed to present, the application is running late. So I don't know how you guys want me to move forward.
Why don't you move forward, and if we find ourselves in need of comment from the applicant, we can, we can defer the vote, but why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Okay, so staff is before you to present amendment to final site plan application, AFP dash seven four twenty dash two thousand and sixteen. The subject property is located at three seventy East Diamond Avenue and Zone CBD. This application comes before the planning commission in accordance to section twenty-four dash one seventy-two and twenty-four dash one sixty-eight, which requires planning commission to grant amendments to final site plans. The applicant art displays requesting that the planning commission approve the comprehensive sign package for three seventy East Diamond Avenue property. At the time when the apartment was approved back in two thousand and eight, the sign package was presented to commission members but was never approved. There was a condition put on the approval that the applicant provides the design guidelines and work with staff to get approval for the sign permits before any building issuance. The applicant never received any sign approvals from staff before building the apartments. So when the applicant came in a couple of months ago to present, they brought in, they were applying for a sign permit for a building sign, and we reminded them that a sign package was never approved and that one needs to be completed. So when they finally submitted for the sign package, we noticed that there are some things in the Old Town District guidelines that we can't approve. So there's some signage in here that we need planning commission approval.
Very good. Are you going to step through it, or do you want, do you want to wait for them, or?
Sure, I'm actually briefly.
Why don't you go through it, and as I said, if they get here in time.
Yeah.
So here's part of the sign package, some building elevation. So sign A is, it's going to be this sign here, it's the Gathersburg Station apartment signage. Right now, the building has no signage, and the owner realized people having issues finding where they are. So they really want this sign. It's ninety-nine square feet in size, and it's the halo lit signs. And the rest of the signage is just for the retail tenants on the ground floor. So retail tenants allowed to have a facelit, channellit letter sign, halo lit sign, just an externally illuminated sign, but it has to be let it face down, not up. So it's more in accordance with the Old Town Design Guidelines. And they're also allowed a flat wall signage. Tenants, some tenants are allowed to have canopy signs, also blade signs, window signage, some neon signs, A-frame sign, and to berate leasing signs. All these signs are actually in, they took the guidelines from the city's sign ordinance in the Old Town.
That surprised me. I didn't think we had internally lit channel letters in the Old Town, allowed the Old Town guideline.
We do.
We do, okay.
I think the rule is, it's within twenty feet they're allowed, but anything less, we need planning commission approval. But it can't be no less than twelve feet from the street curb.
So that's why it's before you, because some of the signs are less than twenty feet from the, the ones, the retail signs are less than twenty feet from the, from the curb.
So in our ordinance now, we say if it's greater than twenty feet, they can have it, and if it's less than, it has to come for the commission approval?
Yes.
And that includes the channel letters, or the internally lit channel letters?
Well, those are allowed by, right, when, when the guidelines were written, Rob, who did a great job on them, and we talked with you about making them so that they would be very flexible, because we didn't know what kind of buildings would be allowed, so.
I'm just going by my own faulty memory. I'm not, I'm not challenging the ordinance. I was, for some reason, I was thinking that wasn't, that didn't make the cut, but you're telling me it did, that's okay.
And the neon signs are behind glass, the window neon signs, they're not exterior neon signs?
Yep, all the window signs were identified to be interior. And then they, in the very last page of the sign package, they outline where signage would be located. So each retail tenant is allowed one building sign.
Okay. And I think the retail makes perfect sense. We want to see the businesses there, if there ever are any, be successful. The only one that I questioned, and I'm not necessarily against it, was the large stack vertical corner thing, which has kind of old-fashioned quality to it that might make sense there. But the others seem to be fairly straightforward. What, what is the calculation on signage in the ordinance relative to that corner? Is that all fine with coverage, or is there an exception even there?
It's fine with the size. It's the hundred, or the, is it the ten percent?
Even the halo lit technique is a nice, a nice touch to sort of, I think, a little more contemporary than just a painted on thing. All right. Any questions from commissioners?
No.
No. Any concerns that we should wait for the applicant to be here to answer questions or address any concerns?
I have Stacy from Equity who's here, if you have any questions.
My one and only concern, and it's a, it's sort of the worst-case scenario concern, is looking at the elevation, exhibit number two in the staff packet, for all the letter E signs, which are the window neon signs. As this looks now, assuming there were ever all the tenants filled, you could have a neon sign in every window. You know, is there, is there any limit anywhere in here that sort of limits a percentage of neon?
Even worse, it could all be nail shavings.
Yeah, I mean, one or, one or two per, per retail establishment wouldn't be a problem, but if they all put some sort of neon in there, it would be very not Old Town.
Right. Although, there's quite a bit of neon in play right now in Old Town. I mean, it's a little more sporadic, a little bit more, you know.
Yeah, and I really, I'm just reacting to that diagram that has a big orange box in every window that says neon on it.
Right. You probably wouldn't say neon.
If it's interior, interior signs, technically, we don't have a lot of leeway.
Actually, I think the orange box just represents window graphics, so it's also the neon and the, if they want to put window graphics.
And my, my fear is that we won't get enough of them. You know, so my fear is that the guys are going to step up and they're going to say, how much if I do a blade sign, you know, and a canopy sign, and I put a nice little sign above, and I got a nice window decoration? How much? And they say, nah, you know, get rid of the window stuff. I don't care if my window looks the same as the window next door. You know, get rid of the canopy one, I don't want to pay extra. I want to encourage, you know, these, these retailers to really express themselves individually along that street, so that this big sidewalk that we worked really hard to get in this sort of very compromised retail space, if you've been in there, it's really hard to lease the space. It's very poorly designed, they'll say. So that, you know, giving them the ability, actually, encourage, not giving them, but encouraging them to go further than probably where I think they're probably comfortable, you know, spending the money, is my, was my goal for this particular project. So I'm actually going to kind of have the other concern, that they're not going to put enough signage on it.
The funky factor.
Yeah.
Funky factor.
Yeah.
Is that what I would.
Yeah, that's what you called it, the funky factor.
Cue. Yeah. John, you want to say something?
Well, if I may, it would be so awesome to get actual retail in these spaces. I would just encourage you to be as flexible as possible.
I tend to agree. All right. And then the one building sign on the corner is the one, right? To identify the actual apartment.
It's going to be one facing East Diamond, and it says on that corner.
You know, I just had a comment regarding the neon signs, and I agree with you, but at the same time, my concern is that it, this is sort of like a layering issue, like when people don't get enough exposure, they tend to have open signs, and open and open as many places as they can. So looking at that diagram makes me a little concerned about how many of those signs they can tag on. I think, you know, if we were to say no more than twenty-five percent of the total fronted, of the total, like, window.
For the neon?
For the neon.
I think that's, that guy's already, isn't that already open, though, for, we'd have changed the ordinance at that point, right?
Right, right.
I don't mean to jump in, but just to remind, with the design guidelines for CBD, what it says is it only overrides if not explicit, you know, explicitly for the sign ordinance. The sign ordinance does have a cap on the amount of neon and the coverage of a window, even internally. So a lot of the commission's concerns is handled through the standard sign ordinance. We just chose not to address it through this, the Old Town Design Guidelines, so it automatically does defer. So while it's allowed, the standards under the sign ordinance are still in place, and I believe it's like twenty-five, no more than twenty-five or thirty percent already of a window, be it internal or external signs.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else? I noticed the applicant has sat, come in and had a seat at the table here. Anything you want to add to the presentation or discussion? And actually, if you'd introduce yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Bob Birnag with Art Distra Company. We're the, put this package together, would help with the staff, you know. I think we've worked hard to get where we are. I believe the original developers started some kind of package, but it was never approved or never went through the whole process. And I think we started this process three months ago. We worked closely with the staff to make sure everything's within the guideline of the Old Town and meets all the requirements, you know. And as you see, there's a lot of space that are all, you know, not occupied yet, and we are trying, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to put a package together to satisfy everybody, because you got a lot of this box, you know, national companies wants to come in, but, and they don't see it, some type of a comprehensive sign plan in place, they're kind of stay away from, you know, from the, from the renting the space. So we are, I think we're, we are close to what we're trying to achieve. I think the main thing is the sign on the building, which identifies two things, with its name of the center and also the apartment building, which don't have any signage right now. That's where we are.
And that's the halo lit?
Yeah, halo lit. That's, one of the, I think the owners and us, didn't want it to have the sign to be too bright, because you are in the corner of the building, in order to keep the lighting, because you got windows on both sides. The halo illumination is very soft, so that's what we came up with the design.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Since you're here, you really spaced out four retail tenants, right?
Yeah.
And, but there's, we'll just come back if there ends up being a fifth, and put, you know, another B sign somewhere towards the corner or something if we need it. Is that how we deal with that? Actually, it's a question for staff, I guess, really, but. Do we just amend the sign plan if it ends up being a fifth tenant or something?
I believe we would.
Yes, I think so. We could probably do that in the staff level, so.
Okay, great. Good, I like that.
Okay, is there anyone else that's here to talk about the gap? So Jasmine, the recommendation is?
Okay, staff recommends that the planning commission base the exhibit submitted, the staff report findings, recommendations, grant AFP dash seventy-four twenty dash two thousand and sixteen, Gathersburg Station apartment signage, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy-two A and section one, sorry, section twenty-four dash one sixty-eight of the city code and the Old Town Design Guidelines with no conditions.
Excellent. Any questions on the recommendation?
I agree with Director of Planning and Coach, looking that it's, it's first priority here is to see a favorable environment for tenants to lease the space finally. It's been, it's been quite a while now, so I'd like to see this move forward. Is there any reservations to the, to the package as presented?
None. I'll even uncompliment the package and just say I think it's very well done. The diversity of signage and the vibrancy of it is fantastic, exactly what this strip of, of retail needs. So thank you for a good, nice package. We don't always get them. Usually I get something to criticize, but this is a great package.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, is there a motion, please?
I move that we grant AFP seven four two oh dash two thousand and sixteen, based on the exhibit submitted, the applicant's testimony and staff report findings and recommendations in, finding it in compliance with sections twenty-four dash one seventy, twenty-four dash one seventy-two A of the city code and the Old Town Design Guidelines with no conditions.
Second. To move to the second, and all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Passes unanimously. Thanks very much, good luck. Look forward to seeing some new tenants soon. All right, that takes us from the, to the, to from the commission. Matt, may I start with you tonight, please?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Just want to remind everybody that Sunday's Oktoberfest, and that's a big, big event that's going to be held at the Kentlands, and throughout the Kentlands, basically. So parking's available, there's going to be a lot of entertainment, a lot of other things, a lot of exhibits going on. Just go and enjoy. It's from twelve o'clock to four o'clock at Kentlands, and I think it's the twenty-fifth, twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth, so it's a big one.
People stare at unused, unprogrammed public space in a neighborhood and they wonder what it's for, and that's what it's for.
And Lloyd will be there in his lighter hose, and so.
My lighter.
Chris Allen, any?
I just want to invite everyone, at Oktoberfest, the Kentlands Community Foundation and the Kentlands Community Association have partnered to open a Kentlands museum. A lot of our greater Gathersburg or maybe Montgomery County don't know of the specialness of this community and the landmark that it represents in the planning history of the United States, I should say. And so we have opened the Carrot House, which is three, two, one Kent Square Road, as a Kentlands museum. There will be long-time residents, they will, we will feature a video that was put together by the, by Dwyane Plante, Cyberg and Company, and presented to the United Nations as they received the Model Settlement Award by the United Nations last year. It will be playing every hour, so I encourage everyone to stop by.
Cool.
Excellent. Anything?
I'm good tonight, thanks.
All right. So where shall we start from, staff? Anybody? Anybody? Rob? Can you do the text amendment?
Yes. Staff is before you this evening, seeking sponsorship for a draft text amendment. The amendment is going to deal with commercial recreational restaurants, amusement centers, recreational buildings. And as I go through this brief presentation, you're going to see, it's going to pick up on many of the themes tangentially we've talked about already this evening with other applications. So with the background, changing dynamics within retail, restaurant, entertainment, and recreational uses, as is here, are often mixed in a single business model. You know, the days of single-use commercial uses are sort of going away. In many commercial centers, as Commissioner Hopkins can probably attest to, are now positioning themselves more to be lifestyle or activity-based than solely. than solely a nexus, you know, a little spot for soft good sales. Our current zoning ordinance that we talked about time and again is at times antiquated and overly restrictive and may preclude uses that would invigorate the city's commercial activity centers. I put the Dave and Buster's up here because this is really the impetus for this text amendment. Dave and Buster's, as you may or may not be aware, at one point was looking at Lake Forest Mall and was also looking at Washingtonian Rio. The issue with Lake Forest Mall was, it was a special exception, so it was an additional, you know, bureaucratic burden in some ways to go there. And as will be discussed, Washingtonian, it wasn't allowed at all because of the nuances of our code and definitions. Further, other uses such as recreational or amusement are really undefined in our zoning ordinance, but referenced throughout the code. And we have a lot of plans that, you know, don't really call them out and it really can't be considered retail because these aren't retail uses. So the current code, amusement center, the real issue one with this and highlighted is, it's really an arbitrary thing and it's based upon 10-point operator of fee paid amusement devices. This is a holdover from the eighties dealing with arcades, which, you know, will be hard pressed to define. It does exclude pool tables and billiard tables, but the way the definition is written, and we can always defer to our Assistant City Attorney, things like bowling alleys can technically be called in this. And there's so many places now that have amusement devices that if you really went in, it would fall under this. The main crux of this is, they're not allowed by right in any zone. Commercial recreational restaurant, again, going down to three, the real issue with this is areas devoted primarily, it limits the floor space to 25% of the gross floor area. Well, that automatically precludes the Chuck E. Cheese's, the Dave and Buster's, the pinstripes, the sort of these new power users that actually draw people into, to a commercial center. Again, the main key is these are not allowed by right in any zone. For recreational buildings and uses, the real issue with this one, it's not defined anywhere. But it's referenced, so what I highlighted was the amusement center is part of and clearly accessory to a separate primary recreational building. But what does that mean? Where do you, where do you draw the line? And as I said down here, though, the thing is recreational uses in buildings are by right in zones, but we really don't know what they are. So the framework of the issue, the MXD zone, every use allowed by right in any zone is allowed there. Well, because amusement centers and commercial recreational buildings aren't allowed by right anywhere, they're not allowed in any MXD zone. The same CD zone and CBD have basically the same thing just phrased differently, not solely as. Well, these are solely as. And the C2 zone, the debate is really, are these uses special exceptions or are they allowed by right? Because with the changing models, it's hard, it's not as clear cut. We know the intent back in the eighties was arcades, but that's really not there anymore. So spatially, this is highlighting, these are really the areas, you know, our commercial activity nodes that are going to be really impacted by this. And these are a variety of zones. We, we just didn't want to do the zones, but we really wanted to show people what we were talking about. You know, we want to invigorate Kentlands Commercial District, Crown, Washingtonian, Muddy Branch Square, Lake Forest Mall, Watkins Mill Town Center, which hasn't even been built yet. I mean, we're already pulling stuff out of what they can do to enliven or make this successful. So the goals, have a zoning ordinance reflect and accommodate current and future business models. You know, once again, let's not be, like, right now, let's try to think of something that can address those things we haven't thought of yet. Promote uses in the commercial centers that stimulate the activity lifestyle aspect of non-residential mixed-use commercial centers. Let's remove unnecessary processes that act as a disincentive to investments such as special exceptions. And let's create certainty to encourage investment in city commercial centers by creating by right uses and clear definitions. So there's no misunderstanding. So the proposed solutions, you know, one of the main things about the commercial recreational restaurant and restaurants, the main difference was they had different parking centers. That went away when Caroline redid the parking ordinance. So one of the main differences on that standpoint is gone. So we're proposing to delete the definition of commercial recreational restaurant and delete the references in the various zones as a special exception. As it goes to amusement center, what we're talking about now is amending the definition and then bringing in the recreational facility. So now it would read a commercial operated facility which recreational activities are offered or amusement devices provided to the public as the principal commercial activity of such establishment. And the important thing here is commercial establishment and principal use. So, you know, if you have a nonprofit or a church, you know, or has something, that's not going to fall under that. If you open a public park, that's not going to fall in because that's not a commercial entity. And then we do some, as you may remember, that we did with the integrated light manufacturing. Let's give examples to sort of lay in context, but we can't do a definitive list or our zoning ordinance over the years will be filled with every possible use. So this lays it out. By doing this, we would then delete the amusement center references as special exceptions and amend and clarify the new language as by right in the various zones where it is now. So what will this do? It'll allow things like Dave and Buster's to be used as regular restaurants. It'll allow these restaurants and models and amusement centers to be considered in our, our mixed, you know, our floating zones. And we'll make stuff by right in the C2. We're not going to have to worry about that debate of, is it a special exception, is it not? I mean, I think one of the best examples, Trudy and Greg were working on the iFly coming into the E1. You know, that's something new. Nobody would have envisioned 10 years ago. But, but what is that? It's not retail. It's not office, you know, so it's, it's working these things. So the next steps, as I mentioned before you this evening, you know, to seek input on sponsorship. I did take this idea before our Economic Business, Economic Development and Business Committee. They supported it as would sort of be expected. And should, should the commission this evening sponsor this, you know, obviously we'll go back, further refine the draft ordinance that I, you know, was included in your packet, you know, further vet it. And then we'd schedule a joint public hearing and move forward with this.
I had a question and a comment. It reminds me of all the effort that went into trying to regulate internet cafes, wanting to have them come and go within about a three-year, you know, window. So yeah, there's something very, very temporal about trying to describe a lot of these things, I know, in general. But just to be clear, so let's take, for example, if somebody wanted to open an indoor batting cage. This would, this would be okay under this definition, right? There's nothing to preclude that. Or like the, you know, video golf or something like that, that would all be okay. And is it now?
This is, this is, you know, this is in our discussions, internal discussions with staff, the difficulty is how do you view it? Because if you have 10 batting cages, all of a sudden you're an amusement center. But if you have nine, what are you?
Right, okay.
We have had a batting cage indoor in the E1 zone a few years back before that property got, became CBD.
Sure. So I guess the only, my, my comment then would be, if you're going to point to examples, and I think it's important to do that to kind of get some context, you probably need to add some, you know, VR tech, some stuff that's on that side of the spectrum. Most of the examples are very old school, you know, analog activities.
The reference to dance halls.
What's that?
The reference to dance halls.
What's that mean? So, but yeah, because I think that's where the emerging markets might be is in some things that maybe we don't have terminology for yet or, or good examples for. And I know they're out there, so just, just as sort of a recommendation as this goes forward in the discussion. Anyway, that was, that was sort of the comment. Any other questions?
I think it's a great comment. I might just add some of the, somehow, and I don't know how you do it, but we, if it's broad enough, maybe it doesn't matter, right? But, you know, all the craft-based experience stuff as well, so it's not just machinery and VR and some kind of.
In what sense?
Large things you plug in, but it could be, it could be literally be, you know, craft-based for whatever it is. So, you know, a topiary training class thing.
Well, that's a good point. They're just, I won't, I don't know the brand name offhand, but it's a painting and wine place, right? So what is that? How do you, how do you, you know, okay that use? I'm not saying not to.
There's a bunch of people that come and use a product of some sort, but it's experience-based.
Something.
That we have in Crown Farm, the pottery.
They come, they park their car, they walk in, they spend money, they don't walk out with a bag.
But, but this is the thing, looking, and I feel awful, you know, going to you of all people. We can almost consider that retail because there is the expectation of a physical point of sale. So you are going with something, you, you don't go to those, paint the picture and leave the picture. You go to those, you paint the picture and you leave with an actual good. So you've actually done a cash transaction for a point of sale. So we could make the argument that it is retail. The difficulty with these is, these sort of uses, you're not leaving with it, you're leaving with good feelings, but that's not a retail use.
Yeah, and I'm arguing for the, for the other side. Yeah, I agree if you go in and make something and leave with it, that, that, that's retail. It's paint your, your bear and leave the bear. But no, I think we're seeing more and more, in fact, tremendous amount of experience-based, where you don't walk out with a bag. You don't walk out with anything. You really, you're really just going for the social event and for the training, for whatever it was. The training's really, frankly, it's just an Instagram opportunity. It doesn't matter what it is. I'm pretty sure for these hipsters, it's like, it's like, you know, they just go and they have the experience and then they leave. There's no bag involved. There's no product that comes out of it. So, and some of it gets really weird. But, you know, I think, I think there's a whole opportunity for these, for these spaces, obviously. You know, somewhere between two and 10 times of our, you know, sort of soft good retail is going to be useless in the next five to 10 years. But we're also under, you know, built for these experience-based spaces by.
If I may ask, do you have an example, because I am happy to include that in the draft ordinance to at least give that first jumping off point? I mean, candidly, that, that, what you're, what you're describing didn't even cross my mind, but I think that's the intent of why we're trying to do this broad. So if you don't have something, even just one single example to include in there, that at least gives us the ability when another similar use comes in, we have something to judge it against with the ordinance.
It's really hard, but the cliche.
Laser tag is in that, that turf. I mean, that's where you, you go and you do something and you leave without anything and it's, you know.
But, but that, that's sort of covered in here and that, you know, that, that's sort of explained because that is, you know, typical recreation.
So the cliche, if you go to APA, right, and you take the course on experience-based retail or something like that, the, the example that they've been using for the past four years, it's exhausting to those of us who had to sit through it several times, but the cliche, the cliche is this Brooklyn axe handle custom maker, right? It's a shop that started in Brooklyn and they, you can come in and make a custom axe handle. Nobody in Brooklyn needs axes. Nobody walks out with an axe, right? But they literally pay a lot of money to come, drink, eat and make axe handles in Brooklyn. It's a very popular event. It's Instagrammed up and down. And you're not going to go, Rob, and probably I'm not either, but. But you would want to keep the handles, so.
Well, I think also on the bigger picture, with sort of what we were discussing, going back to the commercial recreational restaurant, by doing away with this stuff, that, if, if the prime commercial entity is the restaurant with this other thing, we would handle it as restaurant. It wouldn't fall under an amusement or recreational facility. So we're, we're sort of pulling the, the restaurant app, those restaurant uses with these other things out of there and just calling those restaurant now. These are just dealing with the solely commercial amusement and recreational things, which I, I pulled back up your, just to make it work because I sort of glossed over it. We did intentionally withdraw theaters and commercial fitness centers out of this definition because they're sort of, they're changing the lines, they're theaters, you know, or have their own definition or are called out as specific uses in multiple zones and commercial fitness centers. While it is somewhat recreation, they've expanded now to be more of a personal service entity, more so than, you know, going to a batting cage, so.
So to play it the other way, is there something we wouldn't want to see? I mean, just, just candidly, is there an example of these, of an experiential, you know?
I, I, I think it's how you look at it, because once again, the zones impacted, again, sort of like the discussion we had with Integrated Light Manufacturing. For the floating zones, remember that while everything's allowed, nothing's allowed because everything has to be approved at the SKECH or SDP stage. So while we could say, you know, these at the SKECH stage amusement recreational facilities, it could be further refined at SDP to preclude specific uses. And sometimes the, the market in and of itself is going to preclude certain uses. The Euclidean?
No, no, my fear is that a market would support something that we really don't want to see in a neighborhood. I don't have an example.
No, I understand, but, but the other zones that would be impacted are, you know, essentially the I3, the E1 and the C2. So we're really not talking something that's in the heart of a residential neighborhood. I mean, these are typically in solely commercial areas. So, you know, we're not talking about bringing them in any, you know, no residential buffer. We don't have to worry about that or, or commercial buffer or anything, so.
But MXD could, could ultimately.
But, but again, MXD and CD, you know, we have the ability to control what comes in.
Right.
We're not we, the council and the commission.
Is there any model ordinance or model case studies, not model, but any case studies that deal with this from other towns, other cities that?
I haven't looked at it. I had reached out to my friends in Rockville and they hadn't really given it much thought, but I always like to say we're at the forefront. We're farther thinking ahead, so.
Yeah, no, you should be applauded for that, but I think, let me reframe, what you're trying to do is just open it up and we're not trying to define it, right? So, so it doesn't really matter what. Yeah, we're just starting with the examples he was going to use to prove the point. And, and, you know, I won't argue with you, but there's going to be a lot of these sort of experiential based things that don't fall into restaurant, don't fall in. And it's great that we're going to open it up and allow that stuff, or at least allow us the opportunity to approve that as part of the MXD approval, so that's great.
Fair enough.
I don't, I don't know if relying on sort of building codes and public nuisance, you know, pieces is what we're going to have to rely back on if we end up with a use that we can anticipate now that we don't want, you know, sound, trash.
Actually, you know, as I was trying to think of another use that would, could be included into this. I, I lived in Malaysia for a while and also visited some friends in Korea while I was there. And a big trend three years ago was that the karaoke halls, like, you know, and I would wonder, you know, there has to be a, a sound ordinance that controls all of those. Because they were everywhere, like, and I mean, obviously that's a trend to a specific population, but, yeah.
So we have our construction codes that sort of dictate how you build a building and what they specify. And then we have, and then we have our noise ordinances where you can't make a certain amount of noise after a certain time, so.
Yeah, but let's say that, you know, it's an old building and you don't have necessarily, like, it's an area that doesn't have that sound ordinance.
Well, we have, I mean, we have a noise ordinance which would have, could be enforced.
But I guess, I'm, I'm thinking of an old building that doesn't have the proper construction to have, you know, a sound barrier to the next tenant.
Right, and we would, if something happened, then we would bring out our regulations about how much noise can emanate from the, from the building next door and they would have to do some sound.
I'm just throwing ideas out of what, you know.
But I think your idea then brings up, it's kind of like going back to that internet cafe example, you know, on the face value, it looks like an okay use. But then you realize there's some unintended consequences, like late night activities in the parking lot and, you know, things like that, it seemed to be a magnet.
But that's true of every restaurant that has a bar.
No, 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 I'm getting, I think what we're talking about is that at a, at an ideal level, these are all great ideas, right? It would be great to invigorate business centers with this. What we don't know is some of the kind of spinoff activities that happen around some of this depending on the combination of businesses. And we label well until we start to see some of them. A karaoke bar actually is, is no different than a live music venue and it's, you know, it's kind of activated, it's a nighttime thing. That's actually a pretty good idea.
Well, actually, the way that it works, you have your own room and your own TV and you just, like, you know, you get a couch, they get service, like, it's just, you know.
So since you were opening up our zoning ordinance, we're not trying to restrict through zoning. We're going to do it through our public ordinances and the building case.
Yeah, that's right. And I, I guess my only comment was just, just examples that kind of take people past the conventional things we've always seen and recognize there are some things out there emerging that.
Again, as I mentioned, you know, you guys have the draft ordinance with the draft definition. If a use strikes out at you that, you know, that we as staff haven't come up with, I'm happy to write something in to, to do that jumping off point. But again, remember, this amusement and recreational facility is dealing with those that don't have an F and B component. Because that's now just covered as restaurants, so these are, you know, single use or review.
Right, right. Good. Okay, so what do you need for us?
I don't know if a motion has to be done, but, but just to sponsor this proposed text amendment, and as I said, we'll continue to vet it and schedule a public hearing and move forward. And I, I have some guidance now on what you, what the commission is looking for in the background materials with more explanation.
All right, so staff is looking for a, a motion to sponsor the bill?
Chairman, I move that we sponsor, as the planning commission, the proposed text amendment for commercial recreational restaurant amusement centers and recreational buildings.
Second.
We, it's moved in second, in all favor, please say aye.
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 opposed? Yeah, do we have aye? We, okay. So that passes. Please, please move forward.
Please. It's awesome. It really is.
Yeah.
With karaoke bars and whatever else we can get. Actually, that might be good for the space at Old Town. All right, so what's next from staff?
Start with Frank.
Frank. Everybody's pointing at you.
Nothing particularly new. Actually, we do talk about the noise ordinance though, and those can sometimes be interesting municipal infractions to have to enforce. And we did one yesterday and were successful, at least in doing that, not only in obtaining a fairly hefty fine of $500, but, which, which means that we did have some, some good testimony and all of that, but also received an order from the court which will allow future enforcement down the road. So when we do talk generally about, oh, how are we going to enforce that? Indeed, there is that. That's part of what I mentioned, the manual that's been drafted. Those are the kinds of things it deals with. But noise ordinances we talked about tonight can be enforced.
All right, Morty next. Trudy?
Our next gathering is the planning commission on October the 17th for a joint public hearing on Crown's Neighborhoods 3 and 5 schematic development plan. And then our next regular planning commission meeting's Wednesday, October 19th.
John?
Yes, sir. As you all know, Planning Division Chief Marty Mattson has accepted a position as a Community Development Director. Yes, sir. As you all know, Planning Division Chief Marty Mattson has accepted a position as a Community Development Director in Bozeman, Montana. And this is Marty's last meeting. As I think you also know, I spent the better part of three weeks trying to convince him otherwise. But I have accepted and understand, and I think we all have, that Marty and his family need to be back out west where their roots are. I want to thank Marty publicly for his leadership in the Planning Division, for the extraordinary contributions that he has given to us. He leaves a legacy that will not be forgotten. And we wish him every success in Bozeman, tons of adventure as he returns to the mountains he loves.
Absolutely, and I'd second that and add, you know, we've always been very, very impressed with the professionalism and thoroughness and skill and talent of, of the city staff, and we're always very quick to, I think, point it out to other cities. And Marty, you've, you've just, you just added to that and kept the bar high for us, so I think we really appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Marty.
Yeah, thank you. But I also have a very exciting announcement.
Oh, okay. But wait, here's more.
It gives me great pleasure to announce that the new Planning Division Chief for the City of Gaithersburg is Trudy Schwartz.
Very good, congratulations.
I'm sorry, I don't know what's the, apologize for burdening you with that, but no.
Are condolences? No, that's fantastic, congratulations.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And that means you have to sit on this side now, is that what happens?
That's why I'm on this side.
All right, very good.
And Greg, a man, is going to be taking over some of the responsibilities as the supervision of the community planning group.
Congratulations to you too. All right, very good. What else we got?
That's it.
Anything else? Greg, anything? You're going to have to start adding stuff now.
Okay.
Next time people have.
Yeah, we need 50 years worth of history.
If there's nothing else, have a good evening or a journey.